We'll start as we do with a pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Douglas, would you mind leading us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everybody. It's a great way to start. All right, well, we are fortunate tonight to be welcoming a newly appointed commissioner. And so let's carry on with that. I think we have Councilmember Matulik here. Do our oath of office, is that correct? Thank you very much, please.
So I'm there, so I won't go. What do you want us, you want us right here, sorry. So I'm gonna have you face me and then so you can actually read it from here if you need to, so.
Ah ha, extra microphones.
Testing, testing.
Okay.
There we go.
So please raise your right hand. So I state your name.
I, Chris White.
Do soundly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation freely.
And that I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose.
Without any mental reservation or purpose.
Of evasion, sorry. Mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
All right, reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, well and faithfully.
And that I will, well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Commissioner White.
Thank you, sir.
So I would like to introduce you to our latest commissioner, Commissioner White. So you could go ahead and take your seat right up there on the dais.
Welcome to the commission, Commissioner White. It's a pleasure to have you with us. All right, well, now that we have our new commissioner seated, let us go ahead and take our roll call.
Commissioner Balabuena.
Aye.
Commissioner Beasley-Stansberry.
Present.
Commissioner Maderos.
Present.
Chair Blind.
Present.
Commissioner Douglas. And Commissioner White. Absent Vice Chair Taylor, we have a quorum.
All right, wonderful. All right, so we are here at Agenda Item Number Five is our consent calendar. And approval of the agenda. There's two items on it today, which is the approval of today's agenda and then the approval of the minutes. And I think we can do those at once, if that's okay. Can we get a motion to approve these two consent calendar items?
I move that we approve the agenda for today's meeting as well as the meeting minutes for October 6, 2025, regular meeting.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Excellent. All right, we'll go to a vote. We all help each other up here.
I need one more vote. We have six ayes and the motion carries.
All right, look at that. We're on a roll here. All right, so Agenda Item Number Six, this is our report from our city council liaison, Councilmember Matulik. It's a pleasure to have you at the dais again.
Well, thank you very much and good evening, Chair Blind, Commissioner Douglas, Commissioner White, Commissioner Maderos, Commissioner Beasley-Stansberry and Commissioner Balabuena, staff and to the general public. Thank you for being here tonight for our planning commission meeting. And since many of you were not here at the last meeting, I just want to kind of reemphasize or kind of remind people what I mentioned last time. So the fact that you all have a work plan, you have the ability to have a, put a work plan together with a budget on that. And so with that work plan, if there's any things, for example, for trainings or things of that nature that may cost, have a cost associated with that, whether there's materials you may think that may benefit what you do as planning commissioners, going to the farmer's market and setting up things of that nature. Put that work plan together and then that would allow you to put a number towards any type of activity and that way, and then staff would take a look at that and kind of bring that in front of city council to get that approved. But once again, just this is your, that's your opportunity for you as a commission to come together, have conversations, so identify what are some of the goals that you guys have as a commissioner. I think one of the things that I would recommend is identifying ways that you, as a group, can get a better understanding out in the community of what you do as a planning commission. I know a lot of people have a general understanding what the planning commission does, but I don't think very many people understand the nuts and bolts of land use and how you guys set up zoning and things of that nature. So if there's something simple that you guys would like to put out there as a community at maybe a farmer's market, have that as maybe a conversation piece for that. But other than that, I want to welcome Commissioner White to his first meeting and here to answer any questions you may have. Oh, and one of the other things I mentioned is if you have not, whenever you guys have any spare reading time, kind of brush up on the general plan 2040, but more specifically, the specific plans that are associated with the general plan. Because I would like you guys have an understanding of the content or kind of like the intent of a lot of those planning, the zoning, but specifically where those specific plans have, especially when you're looking at commercial areas and residential areas, so that you can understand when a project comes in for you in that, in a particular zoning area or a particular specific plan, then you can add some great conversations of how to better improve that project potentially. So, because this goes to the vision that I have with Councilmember Mathias of kind of combining our economic development and our planning commission to kind of look forward of a lot of things that we can do concurrently and work together on. So that's kind of what our vision is, are moving forward. And if we can, at some point, get a meeting between, or whether it's a subcommittee, and that would be dependent on staff in this assistant city attorney to figure out how to best go about that between the economic development team or Economic Development Commission along with this planning commission, then I would like to think that that'd be something that would be a great collaboration type of opportunity there. So, open for any questions anyone might have.
Does anyone have any questions for Councilmember Matulik? Oh, thank you very much, this is great idea.
Thanks for getting letting me off easy today.
Yes. All right. All right, so we are on Agenda Item Number Seven. This is a community forum. This is for anyone that wishes to address the commission on any matter that is not on our agenda today, that is in our purview or portfolio. We can set aside some time and we'll put up a signup sheet now. You can do that online or in person and we'll set aside up to 15 minutes or three minutes per speaker.
Thank you, Chair. We do have currently two speakers that have already signed up for the community forum. I also did start a two-minute timer, which is reflected on the top left corner of the screen for interested parties to sign up for the community forum. Given that timer is running, we'll go ahead and get started by calling up the first in-person speaker, Eli Smith. Please approach the podium. Following Eli, we will be calling upon Paul Theis or Theis on Zoom.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for making time tonight.
Hi, my name's Eli and I'm on the board of several organizations in town, including Vincent's Garden, Vallejo Family Forward and the Vallejo Homeless Union. And as such, I work closely with many of Vallejos on house community members and by extension, many of our lowest-income house citizens. And I'm here to implore you to prioritize accomplishing the low-income housing objectives that were stated in the housing element that was passed last December. With the federal cuts put forth by the so-called Big Beautiful Bill, countless people will lose the ability to retain their benefits. Oh, I'm sorry. Many will lose their housing overnight, like literally overnight. And while all levels of housing are important and needed, including high-income and market-rate housing, because those housing opportunities prevent people from being displaced, the city has a duty to make sure that we have adequate housing stock at all income levels. Seventy-three percent of students in the Vallejo School District are economically insecure. Solano County alone has almost 2,000 students who are experiencing some level of homelessness and that does not include students that aren't enrolled in the district. And of all of the cities in Solano County, Vallejo actually has the largest population of homeless students and we are not the largest city. Please expedite the passing of ordinances that were promised to prevent Vallejo from teetering over the edge of a looming housing disaster. Please work with staff to move this forward as quickly as possible. I can't emphasize enough how quickly this deadline is approaching and how all of the changes that are making on the federal level are going to trickle down and affect Vallejo. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Paul Theis. Please unmute yourself. You have the floor.
Hi, thanks for this opportunity. I live in Vallejo and I'm on the executive committee of the Sierra Club in Solano, which has about 200 members in Vallejo. Thanks for this, again, for this opportunity to speak with you on a matter that is not on the agenda, but needs to be on the front burner of the commission's work, affordable housing in Vallejo. We need affordable housing to deal with the present crisis, not market-rate developments like the one on Rollingwood Drive that gentrify our community. Last October, the planning commission, working under pressure, spoke to this crisis by changing the draft housing element to include an accelerated timeline for an inclusionary zoning ordinance along with a package of render protections. The housing element passed by the council in December mandates that these ordinances, which are overdue to deal with Vallejo's housing crisis, were to come before the council last month. That didn't happen. There should be an explanation for this from planning staff with a way forward to get this done. Instead, you'll be presented soon with yet another market-rate development of 130 units. So far in this housing cycle, Vallejo has permitted only 3% of its agreed-to goals for very low-income housing and only 6% of low-income. A recent article in the San Francisco Chronicle lists Vallejo as the most rent-burdened city in the whole Bay Area. A front-page article in the East Bay Times pointed to high housing costs as the key factor in Bay Area poverty and family stress. Vallejo's homeless population doubled in the last two surveys taken. These are our neighbors being pushed out onto the street by rising rents. Faced with these grim facts, I ask that some form of affordable housing be included in the developer's plan. Interest rate cuts will increase their profit margin. Why can't Vallejo be part of that windfall? Inclusionary zoning ordinances are available off-the-shelf in nearby cities like Richmond and Concord. Preliminary studies shouldn't take long. The facts are staring us in the face. Last year, the planning division was staffed up with nine lawyers on the city attorney's staff. City legal work should be turned around in short order. Meanwhile, as Councilmember Matulik said, developers are contacting Vallejo, possibly to snap up large parcel of lands and get market-rate projects approved before affordable housing ordinances are enacted. On the other hand, the city of Vallejo moves at a glacial pace. Our housing element is almost three years into a seven-year housing cycle.
Time.
With no action so far on affordable housing.
Through the chair, that does it for speakers per community forum.
Thank you very much. All right, thanks to all the speakers who shared with us tonight. We share your sense of urgency around this topic and we'll be working to see what we can do to move this forward. As one of the speakers said, it's one of the reasons we did it last October and I know the council moved quickly on it in December to make sure we got under some deadlines and we advanced some of those deadlines. So we may have created some pressure. I think it's probably positive pressure on the city staff and we know they're going to do their best to meet that pressure and those deadlines. So thank you very much. All right, we are here at Agenda Item Eight. This is our public hearing that was noticed to consider adopting a resolution approving a major use permit. I think we probably have a presentation from the city staff.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to call up Assistant Planner Donna Barsh. This is why I want to make the commission aware tonight is her first planning commission before the city of Vallejo. She recently joined us from the city of Arinda. We're a little over a year now or her one-year probation actually just passed. You know, we're excited that she's part of our team, so I'll present you guys, Donna Barsh.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Chair Blind. Good evening, Chair Blind and members of the planning commission. My name is Donna Barsh, Assistant Planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. Tonight, I'll be presenting a major use permit request for the extended late-night business operations for Planet Fitness located at 42 Spring Center, Springtown Center in Vallejo. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to hold a public hearing, review the project and take action on the major use permit request. Next slide. This item is also subject to the Levine Act, Government Code Section 84308. As a reminder, any planning commissioners who may have received campaign contributions from a party or representative involved in this project should disclose those contributions on the record in accordance to the Levine Act requirements. The project site is located at 42 Springtown Center within the neighborhood mixed-use zoning district and is part of the Springtown Shopping Center. The 1.71 acre is developed with an approximately 18,093 square foot single-story commercial building occupied by Planet Fitness. The surrounding areas include a mix of commercial and residential uses with Springtown or Springs Road to the north and Interstate 80 located three-quarters of a mile west, providing regional access. A building permit was finalized on May 9, 2025 to establish the Planet Fitness tenant improvements. Shortly thereafter, on May 15, 2025, the applicant submitted a major use permit request to extend operating hours beyond midnight. During the internal review period, the planning staff received comments from the Vallejo Police Department concerning the need for additional security measures due to crime activity in the surrounding area. On August 18, 2025, city staff held a meeting with the applicant's team to discuss these concerns. The applicant subsequently revised their plans to include enhanced lighting and security cameras. The updated plans were then resubmitted and determined to be complete by the city on September 4, 2025. So no new construction is proposed. The request is limited to a modification of hours for an existing fitness center classified as a small-scale indoor entertainment facility under the Vallejo Municipal Code. And I've included photos of the site taken during the day here on October 16, 2025 and also at night, which was provided by the applicant. The applicant is requesting approval to allow 24-hour operations seven days a week for the existing Planet Fitness facility. Currently, Planet Fitness hours are open every day from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. The address, oh, sorry. To address safety concerns raised by the Vallejo Police Department, staff is recommending conditions of approval requiring, again, exterior lighting at all building entrances, exits and adjacent parking areas and security cameras providing continuous coverage of entrances, exits and parking areas. These measures are intended to ensure a safe environment for customers and employees during late-night hours. Under Vallejo Municipal Code, Chapter 16.323, any business operating between 12:00 midnight and 6:00 a.m. is subject to the late-night operation standards and requires a major use permit if located within 300 feet of residential zoning districts. Because the site is adjacent to the residential medium-density zone to the east and within 300 feet to the west, this request meets this threshold. The proposed 24-hour use would therefore be consistent with these regulations subject to the recommendation or recommended security conditions. The project has been reviewed in compliance with California Environmental Quality Act and qualifies for a categorical exemption under Section 15301, Class 1, existing facilities as it involves no physical expansion of the existing structure and only a minor alteration in the hours of operation. Therefore, no further environmental review is required. On October 29, pursuant to Vallejo Municipal Code, Section 16.602, a notice of the hearing was published in the Times Herald and mailed to all active neighborhood groups, all property owners within 500 feet of the subject property and any other interested parties and local agencies expected to provide water, wastewater treatment and other essential facilities or services to the project, as well as to the members of the planning commission. No comments were received. Based on staff analysis contained in the presentation and staff report, the project consistency is consistent with General Plan 2040 and the Vallejo Municipal Code. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission find the project exempt from environmental review pursuant to CEQA Guidelines, Section 15301, and approve major use permit, PLN 2598, subject to conditions of approval requiring ongoing maintenance of lighting and security measures. Based on the findings provided in the resolution and subject to the conditions of approval provided as in Exhibit A to the resolution. And this concludes staff presentation. The applicant, Mr. Andrew Davies, is present this evening and available to answer any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see. Should we give the applicant a moment or open the public hearing first?
Through the chair, just to be clear, the applicant is representing a firm that represents the applicant, which is an LLC. So I'm just, well, the applicant is an individual who works for a firm who is representing the LLC, who does business as, you know, the franchise, as the Planet Fitness franchise.
Okay.
So you're talking to several people removed from the franchisee, just so you know.
Okay, I appreciate that. Well, if they'd like to make any comments, please, go ahead.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Chair and the members of the commission. Andrew Davies from EKN Engineering to clarify the city attorney's question. Yes, so I represent an engineering firm. We've been hired to process the entitlements with the city and I want to start by thanking the staff for the very thorough and very timely review of the project. Do this for the franchisee. They own or they operate several franchises across the United States. I believe it's seven states and then six provinces within Canada. Well over 50 franchises that they do operate. They're very experienced in it, very caring. They operate a very good business, very responsive to any city requirements, which I think the city has found in the additional security measures that they have agreed to. I guess I'll conclude by saying we are, on behalf of the applicant, which is the LLC, they agree to the conditions brought forth by the city and I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Great. Thank you.
Through the, through the chair?
Please, go ahead.
And so if you're not able to answer, it's fine. But some of the questions I had were concerning some of the security measures. Are the doors during a specific time, will be, will they be locked? Will there be security at the front? Are there additional security measures at the entrance and exits of the facility in the front? Where, patrons, may I enter?
Yeah, happy to answer that. So as part of the staffing plan, there's always two people onsite at all times. In addition, there is, I believe, as part of the agenda or the presentation, there's a security cameras all inside the building as well as at the exterior, which was part of the conditions, both at the front and rear of the store. The doors are not locked, but there is always somebody at the front desk to check people in and out. But they would be locked if and when the store were closed, as it is now.
Okay. And as far as the two associates only, is there a timeframe? Is it like midnight to six where there's only two or does the business generally operate with a certain amount?
Yeah, that's the minimum. There are, you know, during busier times, there are more than two. I believe as part of, there's a staffing plan that we provided as part of the application. I believe it is a total of around 14 employees. I think there's a maximum of six and then a minimum of two onsite at all times.
Okay. And do they monitor? I know some organizations monitor how many patrons come in per hour. Is there an anticipation, what you would expect per hour between the hours of midnight and 6:00 a.m.?
I don't have the specific data. They do have that data because you scan in and out with your membership. I do know that there is quite a bit. That's why they offer that 24-hour. Particularly in this instance where the opening time is six o'clock. I know a lot of people like to work out earlier in the mornings. Traditionally, they do have a lot of overnight, or people who work night shifts that they will get off of work, they'll go to the gym and then they'll finish out their day at home, which is why they're asking for the extended hours.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I would also like to add, after the applicant did resubmit and submitted the updated plans with like updated exterior lighting and the cameras, we did once again have a meeting with Vallejo Police Department where the applicant did present the security measures to the police department. And after kind of going back and forth at the end, VPD did agree and was okay with the additional lighting and cameras that the applicant was proposing to the exterior of the site.
Through the, through the chair?
Sure.
And I don't know, specific to the applicant, but to planning, did the police department state whether there's like cameras, ALPRs, that are available near that area as additional security measures in general?
They did not. So we were kind of just only going basically on this specific request and then how the cameras would be pointed towards the parking lot and ensuring that, you know, the lights are always on and if they do burn out, that, you know, the applicant did agree. did agree to have those replaced within, I believe it was 24 hours, I believe it is, that we have in the condition of approval.
Okay.
Any further questions for the applicant or city staff before we open the public hearing?
Yes, through the chair?
Yes.
On the staff report, it states under notice and comments that August 29th, a notice went out, but, but I believe your presentation said September? Which is correct?
Sorry about that. It was September 29th.
September, okay. So was the meeting date, as in today, on that public hearing notice? Okay.
Yes.
Under expiration, it says that it would automatically expire in two years, and I believe there was a year extension that would have been a ministerial decision by the director. Can you tell me what happens after that extension of a year? What is the process for the city?
The requirement is that the item would, I'm sorry, that the approval would expire if it's not exercised within that timeframe. So once they start operating their late-night hours, then it's considered exercised, and we don't have to do anything further until such time they stop operating during those hours, and then that new clock would begin.
Okay. Cameras. You probably know a little bit about that. The front entrance, I believe I saw two cameras that covered like, I don't know if they're both 180s or if there's one camera. Can you talk a little bit about that front entrance camera?
Yeah, we can bring up the exhibit. Is that, also go back to the staff report that shows?
Yeah, Manny, there's a slide that has an image.
There it is.
It's very small. On the, on the drawing that we have in our packet, it says dual-lens camera.
So that is, that is one camera with dual lenses, so it's, it looked as if one camera, but you could see, yeah, it covered the 180, yeah.
Okay. And do you know the specs on that camera? Like how far out, what the resolution is? Is it HD? Because a lot of times businesses will put in cheaper cameras, and if something happens, the, it's very grainy, and the police, it doesn't help the police whatsoever. So that's my challenge to you.
Noted. I don't have the specifications, I believe, on, I don't have them on hand, but I, I can get that to the staff to provide that as additional information for you.
Okay.
But it's all, it's not old cameras. It's a new, completely new system. So one would think that it would be of new quality and not something that you may see that's, you know, even 10 years old.
Okay. HD would be best. Let me look through my packet here. If anybody else has questions, please feel free.
Through the chair. Hello. Thank you for coming and informing us about the project. So did you, did we receive, this is for planning, and you, any comments from the neighbors as to anything positive or negative?
No comments were received during the public notice.
And that included all the housing along, what is that, Springs Road there?
Right. Nothing was received.
And what's the other street? Oakwood? Where, you know, because it's right, it's right by the, yeah, I know where it is, you know, but, and I don't expect, there's not much activity because I kind of hit that place a little bit along there. But, and I don't really see any people, generally speaking, that, you know, kind of hang around people there. So I think it'll be safe. I was just wondering if the residents, if you got to them and actually asked them something, or you just give them a piece of paper and hope that they, that they write back, huh? I mean, I'm sorry to be crude like that, but if that's what we've done, then nobody, because it seems like people would be interested in responding to that. What kind of traffic will we be talking about at night generally, anyway, just as in numbers?
I don't recall. I do remember, you know, I've done probably 20 of these in, you know, the Bay Area. As far as traffic, you probably get at that time between 10 and 30 an hour coming in and out. I just recall that from doing parking studies for, at other cities, but that's just from general recollection. And I can also say, it's not unusual to not perceive any comments from nearby or adjacent residents as well.
Thank you, anyway.
I have a couple more.
Just, and once we open the public hearing, we'll, we'll see whether we have any comments from the public. That'll be their opportunity to respond to the letter and see if they're going to sign up either online or in person. Please go ahead.
I'm a member of your other Planet Fitness up the road. They had, it's a, it's very busy parking lot. I don't know about the comparison, but they have a crosswalk in front of the building. Is there currently a crosswalk for this new location? I think that's really important. From the parking lot to the front entrance.
You're, are you speaking to like an ADA path of travel from the parking lot?
It's, it's just a cross, crosswalk.
A crosswalk, a painted crosswalk. I don't believe there is an existing one.
I, I think that's really important. I've seen a lot of close calls in front of the current Planet Fitness. People fly through that parking lot. Also, under number nine maintenance, this is from the planning division, it says, "For burnt-out and broken light bulbs shall be replaced." I would like some sort of time element inserted in there, you know, whether it's 24, 36, 48 hours, something.
Yeah. Through the chair, I do want to acknowledge that I was going to bring that up, that, that time limitation. So if the planning commission would like to add a time limitation of when they would need to repair or replace those lights, the, the commission can do so as part of their motion to amend that condition of approval.
Okay. I, I will be suggesting that one. I believe that's it for me right now.
Through the chair, is this major-use permit only for this specific location? Okay. Thank you. Question. Excuse me. So, so why wouldn't the location on Sonoma extend their hours? What was, what's the difference between?
Well, they already have, yeah.
Oh, they're already 24 hours?
Yeah. They operate 24 hours except for two days a week, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in our report. In Table 3, Planet Fitness, 3, the one located in 3505 Sonoma Boulevard, is Monday, is open Monday to Thursday, open 24 hours. And then Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, they're limited to 12:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And, sorry, that's just Friday. Saturday is 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
I have one additional question. And this just goes from experience with the current Planet Fitness. Sometimes I go in there and the, the music is blaring. So I know that this facility, this new facility backs residential properties. So I have a little concern about, you know, keeping the noise level down after a certain hour for music.
Just a question. Do you hear that outside of the store or inside?
Well, as I'm walking in. So if somebody's going in before me, oh, yeah, you can hear it.
Okay. Noted, and we'll address that with the, the franchisee for operation purposes.
Any further questions for city staff or the applicant while we have them?
Through the chair. If I could try to offer a response on the question about the crosswalk, I wanted to let you know, I just took a look at the other location, and I think that the size of that shopping center is probably a little bit bigger, and the design layout for the parking lot is different in that location. The location on Sonoma Boulevard, basically the front of the building fronts onto island end caps, so there's like a clear place to add a crosswalk. The design of this parking lot is different, where all of the vehicles, they're basically parallel to the building is how they, how they park. So there isn't really space to add a clear crosswalk to an island or end cap. So that's probably the reason why there's not one there.
Thank you very much. All right. Well, we'll have more time to deliberate, and, but for now, let's open the public hearing and see if we have anyone that would like to take the opportunity to respond to this project from the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, we do have one speaker who has currently signed up to speak on this item. Go ahead and call him up. Jose Carisales, please approach the podium. And as he's approaching the podium, we do not have any other speakers on this item.
We'll put up a timer for someone. Thank you very much for making the time tonight.
Jose Carisales, I have been going to the Planet Fitness gyms since 2015. I first started during my, my time of homeless unshelteredness, and I needed a place to shower. My best friend opened it up. So I have been attending Planet Fitness in the Fairfield office as my home, my home gym since 2015. I wanted to address a couple of things that I wrote down. In the mornings when I attend, there's always three to four members of the staff. In the evenings at the Planet Fitness in Fairfield, from midnight to 6:00 a.m., there's two, usually a male and a female. Obviously, because of the restrooms, you need a female to go in. If there's an issue with, with a lady, you need a man. A female can't go in into the men. The music inside the store is very comfortable. It's not loud at all. Cannot hear anything outside. If there's any music outside, it's usually the cars, who are the people are in the car. You're just kind of enjoying their, their time in the car. The crosswalks, there's, I've been going for 10 years with the Fairfield, and I've been going now to the Sonoma Boulevard, then I go now to my new one, which I'm so happy. There's usually not an issue with the crosswalk. This is a very small, maybe from here to the wall. So everybody who crosses pays attention, and it may be one out of 100 or one out of 1,000. I know one is a lot. But there's really, really, really not that much, not that much of an issue. I want to stress that the staff, the expert staff, determined that this does not significantly go beyond the typical operating power, pattern, excuse me, of nearby gyms. It is conditionally allowed. Applicant agreed to incorporate additional safety measures, lighting, enhanced security, security cameras. So the, the Planet Fitness personnel have done their, their part. The expert staff who you hire to make these kind of decisions to help you make the decision, to help satisfy the business owner, have done their job. I'm respectfully asking to allow the, the business to have their hours extended to midnight to 6:00. It's a great facility. I don't know if it's making an impact on me, but after maybe another 10 years, it will. But it's a great facility. There are great personnel. Couple of them from Fairfield came to the Vallejo office. I get to go to both of them because of the same owner or the same franchise owner. So I let, I get to go to the Fairfield and the Springs, Springtown, any, as many times as I want, three, four times a day if I want. So I would respectfully encourage the planning commission. They have done their part. Staff has done their part. I respectfully ask that you agree to the, to their, their hours. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that wraps up the public hearing portion.
Okay. All right. Well, that's the case. Then we will close the, the public hearing. Thank you very much for, you've made time today for that. And we can begin our deliberations. If anyone has anything they'd like to discuss, or we can entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve major-use permit for, I, I can't see the name of the business, of Vallejo East Fitness LLC, doing business as Planet Fitness, to extend their hours of operation from midnight to 6:00 a.m.
I'd like to offer a friendly, a friendly addition, and that is just to have staff include the time limitation for the light bulbs to be replaced when needed.
Through the chair. Does, does, do you want to attach that friendly amendment to your motion?
Through the chair, if you can add, as part of that motion, if you can add a time limitation that the planning commission feels is sufficient.
We will. I'll go ahead and make an amendment to approve the major-use permit for Vallejo East Fitness Limited Liability Company, doing business as Planet Fitness, with an amendment to extend their hours from midnight to 6:00 a.m. in addition to, I believe it is repairing any broken light bulbs within the parking lot within 24 hours.
Does that suffice for the motion, staff?
Were we talking about lights for like the actual parking? Because some of those may require special equipment that needs to be rented. So we may want to extend it from, yeah, 48 or 72 hours, because, and just from owning, from operating the maintenance facility, sometimes I have to rent those out, and they're just unavailable for a couple of days. So if it's 72 or 96.
Let's clarify with the, the city. I believe this is for the security lights on the building itself that's in their premises, not the parking lot lighting. Is that correct?
So that, that's correct. So it's the buildings on the exterior, I'm sorry, the lights on the exterior of the building. But if the planning commission wants to extend that to the parking lot, they're, I guess they're more than welcome to do that as part of the motion.
Commissioner Maderos, can you clear that up? Because that was her amendment.
Well, yeah, and that's my question. Back to the planning division is whoever owns the, the entire mall, I guess you would call it, do, are they under a different set of criteria? And is that provision in their criteria? Because I thought that was a, I thought that was a city code.
So the zoning code provides maintenance for fixtures and lights. That's any light, lighting. So that's anything that's in the parking lot or around adjacent to the building. Just so that the commission is aware, this shopping center is owned by multiple property owners, because it is made up by about seven to nine different parcels.
Wow.
So for this condition, if the planning commission would like to, you know, make sure it spells out like the building and the parking lot, it would be specifically to this parking, the portion of the parking lot that's owned by the property owner and not owned or maintained by the LLC that leases out the building to operate this franchise.
So only to the property owner, not to Planet or Planet Fitness?
Andrew, I don't know if you want to explain, because my understanding is that the franchise only leases out the building, and they're responsible for all the lighting that's around the, the building. And then anything within the parking lot, it's a responsibility of the property owner.
I think that's the sticking point right now.
But that's a typical But that's a typical business situation for corporate, is that they would not be, the, the leasing is not responsible, you're paying CAM, correct?
Correct.
So they're responsible for shrubbery, lighting, whatever you mentioned in the, the walkway, so that may be a conversation we have with them about that.
Well, if they're only responsible for the building, then that's all we can, we can ask them to do. But we all know that parking lot.
Yes, we do.
Okay? And it's, it's a challenge, because we've had, we've had a lot of crime in that area of town, so that's my concern. But if they're only responsible for the building, that's all we can ask them to do. So I, I would think that the 24 hour, if that's under their control, and it's just a single-story building, that they could replace those bulbs. So that's, that's my request.
So I'll make an amendment for 48, for the building itself, that they are leasing within 48 to 72 hours, per Commissioner Balbuena's experience with the equipment. Thank you.
Did you have anything you wanted to clarify?
Uh, nothing, nothing additional, 48 hours would be fine.
48 hours?
Yeah.
All right.
So, so to confirm 48 to 72 hours, or are we leaving it at 48 hours?
No, 48 to 72 hours.
All right, do we have what we need for a motion from staff? Or would you like a clarified?
I got it.
You got it? Okay, then we are looking for a second, if there is a second.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, we'll go to a vote.
We have six ayes and the motion carries.
All right, well, thank you very much. Look forward to the business being open for more time, and helping to bring some liveliness and security to that portion of our city, so thank you very much. All right, so we are on to agenda item number nine, this is written communications. Do we have anything that has, needs to be brought to our attention?
Through the chair, no written communications were received this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much, all right. Number 10, we've got a report of the presiding officer, members of the planning commission. We'll start with a report from the secretary.
Thank you, Chair. I do want to remind the commission that if you do check your city of a low email, you should have received an email from Dahlia, our secretary, requesting your availability for a joint meeting with city council on November 24th, to continue the conversation about the inclusionary housing ordinance. This is the second part, we did have the first part in the Velo Room, so we're looking at Monday, November 24th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. If you can please respond to that email to share your availability, because we would like to schedule that meeting, so we can continue that conversation. The Rollingwood subdivision project that was scheduled for the last planning commission meeting was rescheduled, was rescheduled and re-noticed, so that item is tentatively scheduled to come before the commission on November, uh, November 3rd. Also, I would like to remind that the planning, uh, the commission, that at the next meeting, we are going to take vote on appointing a new chair and vice chair, because the, it alternates individuals every year, so want to say thank you Chair Blind for the past year, you know, being the chair. So, just to want to get the gears turning, if anyone wants to self-nominate or nominate anyone in the commission, just, that is going to be an item for next, the next regular scheduled meeting, so. Other than that, that's all the updates I have for this evening.
Great, uh, thank you very.
Apologies, Director Pollitt has an update as well.
Yeah, thank you, I just wanted to share a little bit more. There was a comment made earlier about, from a member of the public, about the housing element, so I just kind of wanted to circle up on that and remind you all, I sent an email, but we updated the value list that go over all of the current planning projects, as well as all of the long-range planning projects. So, those are on our website right now, if you want to take a look. Specifically related to the long-range, long-range projects, we've got a list that's, I think, five pages long, so we have a lot going on in the department. The housing element item that was specifically commented on, I believe, is related to program F-113, which is renter protection and housing stability program. This is the one that has the tight timeframe. Just to give you an update on this, we have not had any funding resources available to really get that started. However, I believe we shared this previously, we were able to fold some of that outreach work into the early phases of the grant-funded downtown development, downtown specific plan development project. So we, basically, it'll, it'll be like a first phase of work under that project umbrella. With regard to that specific plan, we have drafted a request for proposals, it is in its final stages of review, and we are hoping to get it issued out to the public within, I'm going to say, early November, if, if things go smoothly. So, basically, that's, that's kind of the update on the housing element program, is that we found a way to pay for it, and we are moving along with the process, and hopefully in the next couple of months, you'll start to see some action there. And, and then if you want additional information, I'd be happy to, you know, come back with a more detailed report on a status update of the housing element programs.
Great, wonderful, thank you so much. Just as a quick addendum to that, you know, the email did go out for that November 24th, and given some of the comments we've heard from cities' residents about the urgency behind this, I'd encourage everyone to do what they can, to try to make that time, it's hard to schedule, all of us and the city council, to come to one of these meetings, so to the extent that you can make yourselves available, would be much appreciated. Okay, let's see, 10B, city attorneys' report.
I have nothing to report, thank you.
All right, and then, uh, reports from any of my fellow commissioners, anything they'd like to speak about?
Thank you so much, Director Pollitt, for the update. I did want to circle back, and I know we'll talk about it in November, but I really would like to maybe speak, maybe with you offline, more about some sort of opportunity fund, one that requires developers a price tag when they do want to develop here, market rate, but specifically more in line with commercial developments. It's hard to kind of, for, you know, residential to pay.
If it's okay to tack on to that, the next phase of the inclusionary housing workshop is going to be covering the commercial link, commercial linkage program, so that may be what you're looking for information on, so that's definitely forthcoming.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I didn't quite understand what you were saying in combining or, it, it was with the downtown specific plan, but I know that there's two ordinances out there in reference to inclusionary zoning ordinance, as well as the affordable housing ordinance. Is that what you were referring to, or is that, is that two other things that are totally non-related?
I think those are two separate programs in the housing element, so the inclusionary housing ordinance, that work is under one program, and then the other one that I was referring to was the rent stabilization and renter protection, and that is probably one of the programs that had the tightest timeframe on it. So that was the one I was providing the update on.
Okay, okay. I did have a question. Cesar, you were supposed to get us the budget that we had for, for this commission?
Yeah, so our administrative analyst just came back from vacation, so that's, we have, actually have a meeting scheduled to go over that, so I'll have an update for you guys, either via email, just to let you know what the budget is for this commission, or I'll bring it to the next regular scheduled meeting.
Anyone else have any?
Did we ever explore the iPads instead of us wasting the paper? Not wasting, because I, I definitely like to read the paper, but.
I, I am very in support of that.
I bet.
I think we, that's another item we need to reconnect with our analysts to make, to see if we have the funds available.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, right, one thing I'll, I'll bring to the commission's attention is just a conversation we started with city staff, and that is, you know, in my time on the commission, we've had lots of great proposals and permits that we've issued for major uses, many of them are for kind of larger franchises, things that are not owned locally, and so we are interested to see what we could bring forward to help our small business owners locally have a competitive leg up when it comes to competing for some of our business opportunities. So, just started that conversation, I think it would be a worthwhile one to try to figure out, while these, you know, out-of-town big-box stores and franchises provide a great service for our, our city, they also take a lot of the profits there, and they leave our city. And so trying to figure out what we can do to try to encourage some small businesses to be homegrown and develop here, and retain all those profits here. So, something that we're going to talk about getting on the agenda as either kind of a study item, where we can see what it is that the city does to help local business owners move kind of their business along here in the city, or the things that may be out there in adjacent communities that we may be interested in adopting or adapting in some way to help that same purpose in this, in this town here, virus. So hopefully we can get that agendized over the next couple of meetings, and try to see what we might be able to do there. All right, we, oh, please.
One more thing, the Mayor Island specific plan, what, what are we, where are we at with that? I know it's in review right now, or in some sort of draft format, it's gone to the city. Can you give us an update, please?
Um, yes, I can provide a quick update. We have a third-party consultant who is assisting us in completing our in-depth review of the document itself, just to make sure we are checking all of the pieces and capturing all of the things that really need to be in that specific plan. So that work is underway, it's actually getting close to wrapping up. We have provided preliminary comments to the applicant's team with regards to some things that staff has found, but this is just an extra set of eyes. In addition, the EIR process has actually kicked off as well. We have brought on a consultant to prepare that EIR, and they are currently in the process of drafting the project description, so that is underway as well.
Just to follow up with that too, is there going to be public input before the EIR comes out, after it's come out? I mean, what's, what's the public process in this?
Um, yes, before the EIR is released for review, there's going to be a notice of preparation that's sent out that allows the community an opportunity to provide comments and input on what information really should be included in that analysis. So I think that's probably the first thing you'll see, when that goes out, there's going to be a scoping session to, basically, it'll be a public workshop that will allow those folks to come in and provide comments in person.
All right, thank you all very much. I don't believe we have at the current time any ad hoc subcommittees, so with that concludes agenda item number 10. That brings us to everyone's favorite agenda item, number 11, and that's adjournment, so we will adjourn this meeting at 8:07 PM. Thank you very much.